Okay, we are live.
Oh, perfect. Good evening. Today is Wednesday, September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. The time is now six oh seven PM. This is a regular session of the Board of the School Trustees for the School City of East Chicago. The place is School City of East Chicago Administration Building, four two oh one, East one hundred and forty-fourth Street in East Chicago, Indiana, four six three one two, and can also be viewed live via livestream at www.scec.k twelve dot IN dot US. This is a meeting of the School Board and public for the purpose of conducting the school corporation's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. We do ask that everyone refrain, be respectful of the person who is presenting and or speaking in the audience. Uh, the next will we have? Um. The first item on the agenda is approval of, I'm sorry, roll call. Roll call.
Justice Rodriguez?
President.
Jesse Gomez?
Present.
Christie Williams?
Present.
Christie Smith?
Present.
Chairman Hernandez.
Present. Next, can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Next, we will move to the presentation portion of the meeting. Dr. Disney?
Would refer to our board of directors.
Okay, just back me up one. I don't think we have an approval of the agenda. Who's the first?
Oh, I'm sorry. You are correct. Um, can we please have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
As president.
Trustee Gomez.
Uh, yes, I'd like to add to the agenda. Item number eighteen, approval of library board appointments.
Justice Gomez. Trustee Gomez makes a motion for approval of a library appointment and trustee Rodriguez second the motion? Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, are there any questions? Ms. Bigum, roll call, please.
Justice Rodriguez?
Yes.
Jesse Gomez?
Yes.
Christie Williams?
Yes.
Christie Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez.
Yes. Now we'll move to the presentations and it will be the two thousand and twenty-two budget presentation and hearing. Dr. Disney?
President, before we do that, I just see one approval of agenda. I'd like to move for approval of agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, approval of agenda with adding on item number eighteen.
Yes, thank you.
My question for approval of agenda.
Just. Trustee Smith makes the approval and trustee Gomez seconds the motion. Any questions? Roll call.
Justice Rodriguez?
Yes.
Jesse Gomez?
Yes.
Jesse Williams?
Yes.
Christie Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez.
Yes. Now we'll go into the presentation for two thousand and twenty-two budget presentation and hearing.
Refer to.
All right, good evening, everyone. Notice was given to taxpayers and publish, which you'll see on the screen right now, uh, of a presentation in here of two thousand and twenty-two budget. Um, our chief financial officer, Leo Simmons, is here tonight to give a full overview. The notice that you see on the screen is available on the website listed at the top, also on the school's website itself. Um, if there are comments or objections to the budget, you need to see the following procedures that are outlined in this notice. Um, with that being said, I ask Miss Simmons to proceed with her presentation.
Good evening, everyone. We are in the budget season of going into two thousand and twenty-two and it's the calendar year. It's not the full year. Our budget pertains of three parts, the debt service, the education, and the operation fund. The debt service is based upon our levy. We always come in lesser than our levies to make sure that we're going to qualify for the full levy. Also, our education fund is based upon the basic grant that we get back from the state. And it's basically based on the self-taxes that the state receives and give us portions of the fund per student. Depends on what our ADM account is. Our operation fund is the taxpayers' fund. That is the money that we get from the taxpayers to cover all of the operations in the district. Um, operation staff, also any maintenance that we have to do to any building or any repairs. This year, where we increased it this year by, um, the projected raise that we possibly need to get out, give out this year. So we did increase it this year to handle that, to put in our projections of making sure that we are totally covered for the year with no deficit or anything. The next form is the Form One. Uh, this form will be posted on the website as of this evening. This form gives the detail of everything that we pay out, um, as far as employees, as far as benefits, um, as far as our education fund, our operation fund. Um, this fund is really in detail by activity number and also account number. So it will have the education part and then at the we find blank on me. It might be catching up. It also has the operations fund there and the debt service fund. So this is the detail to the sheet that I just presented to you, which was the Form Three, which is in a in a session of just my. Now, when our budget, we had to also account for bus transportation, which means, um, if we're going to actually purchase numerous buses this year, I have to do this budget even if I do not purchase bu- buses. I'll do a revision to the state if I elect not to. But I try to anticipate repairing buses. If I can't repair them, I anticipate actually inspiring them and getting those new buses. So as anyone in the district would know, we have replaced at least fifteen to seventeen buses with the new propane buses, which has worked out well for us, um, as far as gas prices. This year I got on the schedule of replacing two and nine times out of ten, our transportation director goes out and get grants. So when it comes down to like last year, we scheduled three, but the grant took care of two and a half. So long as we can get the grants, we can also account for money staying in our operation fund and not, um, spending that fund, but spending a grant fund. We also prepare a capital project fund. Capital projects is going to be a little bit different this year. We're budgeting for the one point seven million of the capital projects. These capital projects is going to come out of the operation funds, but we are going to be doing more capital projects in the district that's going to require us to have extra funds to help us out. So we're going to lose a large portion of the extra extra funds this year to do total overhauls on all our HVAC system. That is a major dollar amount, but we need it. We need to have a clean air circulating in our buildings. We need, um, to make sure that our heat is controlled correctly, our air conditioning is controlled correctly. So these here are going to come out of the operation fund and the bigger projects are going to come out of the extra funds. Also, this will also leave us more money in our operation funds to go forward so we can build a surplus in the operation funds. The operation funds are the biggest ones to take the hit. Um, and we want to curb that off by doing the major repairs so we don't have to do the repairs to the buildings like replacing the roofs in the HVAC. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to see if the board has any questions.
I do have a question, Ms. Simmons. In regards to the bus replacement fund, so this summer we've noticed that all of our, the buses that are, um, not propane, but the, um, what's it called?
DSO?
The D's, no, the propane buses, I'm sorry. They didn't have any air on them. So we have brand-new buses that don't have air or they don't have air that reached to the back where the students are at. Should that be added into the bus replacement fund? Can that be added to there because, um, I mean, we shouldn't have the issue where students have no air on buses.
No, they cannot be added to the bus replacement fund, but that can be added to is the operation fund. We can put that in as a repair to add air to the buses that do not have it, but it will come out of the operation fund.
Okay, I was just wondering so that we could keep an eye on, especially when we buy brand-new more buses, if we get to that point, that we make sure that we have something that works in the summertime also. Or is comfortable for our kids.
Yes, I will keep that on the radar for our next bus purchase. Any more questions for the board? Uh, trustee, um, president, can you please open it for me?
Um, if anyone in the audience or actually Attorney Harris, if you would like to just give a brief again about, um, questions being pertaining to the budget and the budget only at this point in time?
Sure, so to, yes, so tonight being the night reserved for comment of the public hearing on the budget, questions can be asked. Now, comments can be made relative to the budget. Keep in mind that the notice includes a provision that says that any objection that you'd like to make with respect to the budget has to be filed within seven days. So, um, that's why we're having the public hearing. You can ask your questions now, comments now. If there's information that you'd like to receive, you can get that now so that you can time to file anything that you think is appropriate within a seven days. Uh, if you have any comments, those comments seem to be limited to the budget itself. There was a separate signage sheet for public comment on matters generally right now. Uh, we're opening it up for comments on the budget specific, two thousand and twenty-two budget specific.
So, um, Ms. Simmons, I cannot see anyone there, but if you would like to just call whoever has any questions, that'd be great.
Yeah, okay. I just had a question. You said something about the supply budget. You had an opposite supply budget. Did you show that come also?
So the supply budget is not listed there on the?
Will it be on the web too or not?
Uh, yes, if you vote for Form, I'm sorry, Form One, the supply budget will be listed up on your education. It's in details there. Yes.
Ms. Simmons, I'm not too good about budgets. What does signage mean on, on your very first page?
On the capital?
That would be the signage, that word signage.
That means now I'm going to be putting signs, new signs outside of different school buildings. Yeah, just to make the marquees, the marquees out there. I want to change those up. Hopefully to get digital ones like we have here at the administration building. Yeah, just something up there. Yes?
What is the, the point of spending forty-five thousand dollars for writing on these schools when the school needs so much more than a new sign and project?
If you go back to what I said about the capital project, yes, the schools need tons of reviews. We're going to take that repairs out of S. The extra funds, yeah, we're going to do the major repairs out of the extra funds.
If we could please just, if you ask your question or have a comment, just identify yourself for the record. Thank you.
Patty Gibson King. Uh, slide standing to the stuff, going to get some architecture.
That is correct.
Yeah.
And that again will come out of the extra fund. That is going to be the overhaul projects that we do within the district. We will get architects for it back and they will prepare it and we'll go from their recommendations, but that is out for bid. So with no architect, that's been.
It's out for.
Chose that proposal.
Yes. Ms. Simmons, you're also going to, um, and Dr. Disney, uh, address the extra fund at a later meeting. Well, you're going to explain what that money is going to. Am I correct in saying that?
Right, um, the October fourth meeting.
Perfect.
Yes. The self-major repairs include windows being installed in some of the block middle school. There has no windows. Lock middle school will get overhaul of all windows that open. This room has no ventilation. The ventilation HVAC system that we'll put in will take your vet. I do not foresee any tearing out. Um, if the room is in the middle of the building, I can't. It was a wood shop. I'm sorry, just asking. It's the art room. It was the old wood shop room at Lock. It needs a new door. Okay, I will address that when I talk to my facilities director.
Anything else?
I have one more person. I'm sorry, um, sorry, Marquita, I'm hearing a question for next one. Um, your security budget, whatever the amount is, how is that going to be spent or if there is any, how is it going to be dispersed off of the schools or how is it going to be? For say. Our security budget is not technically part of this. Uh, we are using some of the extra funds to, to increase our security budget. So we are addressing any security that we need to address at this time. At this time, is there any more detail of how it's going to decide if more, more, more schools are getting more security decrease? Okay, that will be in your, uh, the extra presentation on October fourth, October fourth. Any more questions?
No more?
No more, just press.
Okay, so the hearing is officially closed. Next, we'll move to the presentation section of student data. Dr. Disney?
Or to.
Absolutely. Um, good evening, um, school board members. Um, we are going to present data to you regarding from our elementary. So it would be K through eight. And we're also going to share data with you for our high school students. Um, overall, what we want to present to you is what our overall goals are as a school board member and staff, to watch and monitor students, even in our districts, to see our students are performing. So I have, at this time, have asked Christina Gutierrez to present for the elementary and Mr. Dave Tocars to present on behalf of the high school. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christina Gutierrez. I am the Director of Elementary Curriculum, and it's a pleasure to be with you here tonight. I just want to take this opportunity to share with you kind of what's going on with our data, but first explain to you where our data is coming from. We at the elementary and middle school take an assessment titled I Ready. This assessment is given three times a year and it's an adaptive assessment that you can see as a diagnostic and we use a lot of the data points to give our instruction. Our overall current beginning of year reading data includes kids that are above grade level, early on grade level, and it varies all the way to three or more grade levels below. So we take this data and we drive instruction with it. We have data meetings with our teachers and we also talk about what we can do to push students out of the color bands. At the elementary, just to give you a little enclosure, this is district-wide data, so everybody's encompassed, all four of our elementary schools. This is our math data. So we're working with thirty-nine percent of our students that are one grade level below in math from twenty-seven to two years below and three years below is thirty-one percent. So we're very much aware of the nationwide crisis of just learning loss in general with COVID. At the elementary level, we do also do an individual assessment because these computerized assessments are adaptive and our kids, uh, there are lots of factors. We don't stop there. We do what's called an independent reading level assessment. Our teachers are in the progress right now of assessing every child individually to find out what their current instructional reading level is. As you can see in the color band, once we identify, we then target skills within those bands. This is our benchmark for where we want our kids to be per kindergarten, first, second, and third. So when we send out progress reports and report cards, we just want to partner with our parents to help everyone understand how we can get our kids moving and on grade level, especially with their reading. Learning loss plan, like I said, this is a nationwide issue right now and we are well aware that we have a urgency to get our kids to where they need to be. So currently in the elementary, we have two designated tier times for reading and for math. Inside the tier times, we title them win, giving the kids what I need, what I need to grow. So in K to two, we have a current focus of phonetic awareness and we have a ninety-five percent intervention that we use with our teachers and our parents to provide that intervention. In third grade, it gets a little bit more differentiated. We have phonetic awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, and then we also push kids on an above-grade level with leveled literacy. In fourth to sixth grade, we use the Indiana State Standards and via our current reading and math program, I Ready, we scaffold comprehension for the students. This once again is a district-wide plan. All four of our, four of our elementaries are on board. We also have a win time that includes math. So we need to balance what our kids are getting instructionally and they, besides their ninety minutes in math or reading, they get an extra thirty minutes to go over the diagnostic of the test that we just took, which is the I Ready. And they are placed into instructional groupings where we are able to remediate, enrich, or maintain our students with their state standards. And we're just going to go ahead. I do have the data with us for the beginning of the year diagnostic for our middle school. Our diagnostic results for reading at the middle school include seventy-four percent of our students that are one or two years below in reading. So we know that we have a lot of catching up to do. Once again, we do have urgency in getting all of these plans put together. Um, but you'll notice that there's a trend with our middle school. In math, it's currently identically the same to what's happening with our math students as well. And we all can agree that reading is an issue that once they get into middle school is a hindrance if they're not able to comprehend and move beyond the reading. So if we can get better at the reading instruction and we can catch them earlier in the elementary, we will be supporting the growth that we see in the middle school. Our next steps for the middle school include to do data talks, have team planning, making sure that we're utilizing the programs that we do have. Um, when we talk about the money that we're getting from the state, understand that programs are not what make our kids. It's the people behind the programs. And so we need to understand that we also need to give support to our teachers in PD and best practices as well as time and how to, um, use the programs that were writing them. And that will lead into our professional development that we plan out for them. So as leadership, as district, we are planning to support our teachers with making sure that we are frequently progress monitoring. We need to make sure that we are watching what we ask to be done and that we are making sacred of the, um, data that's happening and, um, what's the interventions and instruction in the buildings. Um, we have early interventions. I mentioned catching the kids early. You spend more money remedying a child past third grade to catch them up. If we can put into place something that catches our kids in K one and two right away, um, we'll be better off when it comes to our third graders, once they get upstairs learning to read. Once again, to support the plan, we're going to need to support our teachers with professional development and time and making sure that it's meaningful and that they're gaining skills from it. Um, our instructional coaches and our E L specialists, we have two great supports, but we want to make sure that they are aligning and they're giving equitable training to support our teachers. And then, of course, we're always looking for growth and improvement and that will remain as always a team approach with leadership and teachers. And so that is our current data for our middle school and our elementary, and I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm the principal at East Chicago Central. My name is Adrian Brown. I have my administrative team here with me, uh, Ms. Liz, Ms. Lisa Valindas, Assistant Principal, Mr. Dave Tocars, our Instructional Leader, and Ms. Marley, our CTE Director. All right, our first goal here, our goal at East Chicago Central for each and every one of our students is to be either one of these three, all three of possible college and career and military ready. We have built great relationships in all three of these areas with various stakeholders to get our kids to one of these areas upon graduation. So we work every day with our kids, our teachers work tirelessly with our kids to make sure they are ready for one of these three areas upon graduation. Currently this week is College Go Week for our seniors. Uh, we have had a great turnout. Our seniors are coming up. Ms. Dawkins, our, uh, community and schools coordinator has done a great job. This Friday, we have various colleges coming in for our kids to do their applications, do their signings. So we are, uh, making sure we get our kids involved with College Go Week, which is, uh, going on around the world. Also, currently, uh, at this point, each branch of the military has been in to meet with our kids. Today, we had the Marines in, last week was the Army, the week before was the Navy. So we are getting them exposed to, for the ones that, uh, want to go to the military. We are having the military come in and they come in periodically, not just during college, but we, they always in the building. Uh, also for our career, each and every one of our teachers are working with our kids for our careers in the classroom, within their lessons and with everything they do. Uh, so we are doing, working on soft skills and everything with our kids so they'll be prepared for whatever they may do upon graduation. These four questions are questions that we ask our teachers to use with each and every lesson, which we call guiding questions. What do we want students to learn? What will we do for students who have not learned? How will we know if they have learned it and how will we enrich students who have learned? So our teachers, uh, use these guiding questions and other questions just to make sure our kids are getting what they need. All right, this year we had a back-to-school orientation for all three levels. Uh, Monday, before school started, we had our freshmen and parents come in to meet with us as administrators and teachers. On Tuesday was our sophomores, juniors, was on Wednesday, Thursday was our seniors, and on Friday we had, uh, our freshmen come back for a tour of the building and learn other things about East Chicago Central. Overall, we had four hundred of our eleven hundred students to come in during, uh, orientation. It was a great turnout for us for the year that we came off of. This is the Tocars to be next.
All right, good, everyone. I should say, good evening, everyone. I'm Dave Tocars, the Instructional Leader at East Chicago Central High School. And just to spotlight a few things in terms of curriculum, um, East Chicago Central High School does offer over one hundred courses in their building and all of them, of course, from the I D O E. Um, we offer many dual credit courses, A P, as well as C T E courses in terms of our dual credit. We do have partners with four universities and offer these as part of our graduation pathways options. But with Purdue University Northwest, we do have seven courses and students could earn a possible twenty-two credit hours. With IU Bloomington, we currently do offer one course, which is worth four credit hours. We have one course with Vicent's University, um, a C T course for three credit hours, and we also have five courses through Ivy Tech. Currently for twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, we have a little over ninety students enrolled in one of these four universities with us at the high school.
Good evening. My name is Ms. Lyndas. I'm the Assistant Principal of the high school. Uh, one of the things I coordinate is advanced placement. So I make sure these kids are registered, go, um, they're registered to take their test, that's it. It's done in spring. And then we have these amazing teachers who teach these classes. So these are some of the classes that are offered, advanced placement and thinking in the future, thinking forward. What I would like to add is I would like to add A P government. I would like to add A P econ. And I'm really going to shoot for the stars because I want A P computer science. Uh, because I think, um, we can do that and I think our kids can do it. So this is advanced placement and right in the spring when we should have that advanced placement, we had over ninety kids take A P tests. So, um, and hopefully that number will grow up a little more this, this year as well. And hopefully, that number will grow up a little more this, this year as well. So that's A P.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Marley. I'm the C T E and Adult Ed Director here for the high school. C T E stands for Career Technical Education. Like Mr. Tokar said, we have tons of different classes. Twenty-seven of those classes are C T E courses that are available for students to take. We currently offer seven dual-credit courses here at the high school, which Mr. Tokars did mention. This year, we have eight hundred and forty-one total students within our building that are taking at least one C T E credit. So they might be taking one class. Some of them are taking multiple C T E classes. So that's a great way for our students to get exposed to careers while they're in high school. Within those different classes, so those twenty-seven different classes, they fall into ten different pathways. So our pathways include commercial photography, radio and TV, accounting. This artist is right here, one of our lovely dual-credit teachers. Education careers, pharmacy, computer science, culinary arts, fire and rescue engineering. And our newest pathway is criminal justice.
And also, just a few programs that does make East Chicago Central High School unique in the area is Avid. We do have our Avid College Readiness System here at East Chicago Central High School. It is an elective during the school day, when students can enroll. We do have Job, JAB, Jobs for America's Graduates in our building. We also have an R O T C program at the high school. We also have the great communities and schools with us here that do offer some eighth-period courses, as well as many other items in the building. And this year, the C T Department and Ms. Lee is also starting a partnership with P P. And targeting our ninth-grade students and trying to get them more into STEM and trades. Also, just recently, in the past year, the English Science, Social Studies, and Math teachers have worked extremely hard to realign and redo their curriculum maps. All of them, all of them are now geared towards the S A T, which will be the new accountability test for the high school. So all of our maps have been realigned. Our teachers worked extremely hard to increase the rigor and raise, especially the literacy. Within each one of these departments. Also, something new to the high school this year, which we will have more data to share with you, is in within the Science and Social Studies Department. They will be doing the literacy-based assessments, one per quarter. And that is, once again, in an effort as we move towards literacy and the new S A T. Making sure that students are reading and writing in every single classroom across our building. Before we go there, also this year, we will be doing the H M H Growth Measure, which is a new test. That will be done here a little bit later this fall. We will also be doing administering the P S A T a little bit later in the fall. So we hope to share with you some of that data when we return later on this school year.
Alright, before I mention S C L, I do want to mention J R T C just for a second. Because their first competition is October eighth at Hobart. So that's their first big thing that's coming up, and hopefully, when they come back, we'll have pictures to share, and we can put those on the website. Okay, so, social-emotional learning, S C L, this is a big thing that we have last year. Well, first of all, S C L has different levels, tier one, tier two, tier three. And last year, honestly, we didn't get off tier one. We didn't get past tier one. It was just, it was just a rough year. So this year, along with the team, and there's a team of ten, twelve of us in the building. We're already starting to think about, okay, we're coming off of tier one, we're gonna move on to tier two. This is how we're gonna help these kids. This is how we need to help these kids at tier three. So we have three tiers. We meet twice a month. Once at the beginning of the month, we talk about the data, what's the attendance look like, what's the attendance look like, what's discipline look like, what's all that look like? So we talk about the data, the first of the month. The second time we come back, we talk about issues, any issues that we need to talk about for a child. Because during that time, a teacher has referred a child that we should look at, and we do that. We'll look at what we need to do for a child. We'll also look at any issues that, anything that we were charged with from the M T S S meeting. And the M T S S meeting is in the middle of the month, usually, is that am I correct? Right. So anything that we're charged with from the M T S S meeting, that's our duty to make sure that we discuss it. And we come back with some solutions, some answers. Along the way, thankfully, and we thank the board, we got Director Jennifer Beckham. And it's a pleasure to work with her to come up with solutions that we can help, not just the kids, because it's, it's important to help the kids. But for me, we need help our teachers too. Our teachers need some emotional support too. So on both ends, we try to help our kids, and then for me, on the other end, I kind of want to help my teachers too, because they can do a lot as well. So for me, social-emotional learning is a big thing to make, because we gotta take care of our kids, we gotta take care of our teachers. Our teachers are happy, they'll teach some wonderful lessons to some children, and everybody's happy. Well, that's the idea of social-emotional learning. The other cool thing about the slide, I think this is, is that they do, the teachers do a lesson, the S C L lesson every week. Last year, Ms. Daniels, the social worker, and I created a smore. And it's kind of a one-stop shop where there's an S C L lesson in there, there's videos, there's activities. And we push it out to teachers, and they don't have to go fishing for a lesson, it's there. And they don't have to do the whole thing in one day. They can pick and choose, okay, we're gonna do this this day, we're gonna do this this day. And then they come back with feedback and tell us, okay, that was really good, that was really not, that wasn't so great, and we listen. So this is an example, one of the smores that they're working on right now, which is self-regulation. And in that smore, there's two videos embedded, and I think there's an activity, and I think there's a worksheet embedded in that. And that's been their activity for the past two weeks. So next week, Ms. Daniels, who's Clay, will come back, and we'll look at another smore together and push out. So that's S C L, and we do that every week, and it's a big thing, because we meet twice a month, and we have M T S S.
Okay, Mr. Brown kind of touched on this a little bit at the beginning of the presentation, but this week is College Go Week. So we've been doing a lot of different activities with our students. Last week was Why Apply Week. I gotta have to give another shout-out to Ms. Dawkins from C I S, who did a wonderful job. Planning a lot of this, and our guidance counselors at the high school. Monday, we focused on scholarships for our students. Tuesday, we had some college representatives come in to talk with our students. Today was the workforce and military and trades and apprenticeships. And Thursday, tomorrow, again, will be some more scholarships. And then Friday, they're gonna be working in their government classes to work on applications, parchment, the Common App, and Scholar Track. With their guidance counselors, Ms. Dawkins, and their teachers.
Also, to touch on one point from S C L that Mrs. Melendez talked about. We have been, thank you to Ms. Beckham, she has brought in a new company, Infinity, which is another layer of support for our kids socially, emotionally. We'll be starting with us next week. So thank you to Ms. Beckham for reaching out, for getting that resource for our kids at the high school as well, to help with their. Social and emotional skills. Also, I kind of forgot to mention it when we talked about College Go Week, but I know Ms. Lee did. Great, big shout-out along with Ms. Dawkins, to our counselors. Our counselors have been very, very hard. To make sure our kids get everything they need for College Go Week and beyond. So in, alright, so as you can see from our presentation, our main goal is that at the high school is to have our kids ready to enroll, employ, and or enlist. In the military. So we are working tirelessly each and every day, from top to bottom, from the top person, myself, all the way to whomever. Is available for us. So we continue to make sure our kids get everything they need, be ready to go each and every day. And the main goal is come June, whatever day that is in June, for our kids to walk across the stage and be ready to graduate and move forward and be productive citizens. So Ian wants to say thank you for your time, and as always, East Chicago Central is open for volunteers, support. Anybody want to come in as a parent volunteer, we are open. We don't close our doors to go on board a mirror. Thank you.
Just wanted to say, thank you, give a round of applause to our. Just wanted to conclude by saying that this is what the board has been asking for, is to connect the dots on different programs and resources that they've been approving. So this is just the beginning of something great that's gonna happen for the rest of this year, so we can all connect the dots. To look at our partners, our programs, and resources that we have for our students and our staff. So thank you so very much for this time.
I just want to say thank you, Dr. Finley, Dr. Disney, and all the staff that worked on this. You are correct, we definitely did ask for this, and not only for us, but for parents to know what it is that the schools actually offer. So now you have to look. Now you get to just look forward to, you know, where my child at in the elementary level or block level. And then, you know, for the high school, I want my child to be in these type of classes. You know, advanced placement, I don't know if you touched on this for the high school crew, but if I'm correct. Kids who take A P classes, if they pass their test, they get college credits. Am I correct in saying that? So we want to make sure we get those students, our students, in those classes, because we have opportunities to have. Our high school students in East Chicago graduate with college credits, and thank you for all those who keep on pushing that for our students. I don't know if anyone else from the board wanted to say anything.
Well, I would just like to say thank you. We've been asking for this for a while, and you've taken the time out to do the presentation. And it does my heart well, because I know that everybody thinks that. Our district does not have, but you know, the piece that our district has everything. Programs for our children. We just didn't know how they, you know, the accountability of it. And I appreciate you all taking the time out to let us know that our tax dollars and our hard work is not going to waste, and I appreciate that. We also went to a conference this week, last week, and that's social-emotional learning. We have some great ideas as for us to bring back to the community, I mean, to the district, about social-emotional learning. Because that's a big hindrance in our district, and just about everybody's district. So I appreciate you all giving this. It feels like we're not. They're not children, and we're doing the best we possibly can, because East Chicago does have the programs. We just need kids to know how they're doing, and I appreciate that so much. Thank you.
Next, we'll move to the business.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to piggyback off of, off of Ms. Smith, Trustee Smith. The parents need to get involved with their kids. That's so important. We have all the resources needed for these kids. To do great things when they graduate. But if the parents need to get involved, the kids will get excited about doing what they're doing, because the parents are involved. And I tell you, I want to, I want to give kudos to the high school, because not only did the conference last week, that myself, Ms. Smith. As well as Trustee Williams went to. But a lot of the things that they were talking about, not only with the social-emotional learning, the trauma with these kids, as well as the teachers. You guys kind of pointed those two features out, which is great. But the main thing was, is that everything that we heard, we're doing. Everything that they mentioned, every category at this conference, we're doing it. So, but the one ingredient that we're missing is the fact that we have to get the parents involved. Let us know how we can do that. You know, we have to do something out of the norm, you know, to get off that highway, to create our own road, to get it done. Let's get it done, and let's get these parents involved.
Anyone else? Next, we'll move to the business portion of the meeting. The first item is approval of the minutes. What is the pleasure of the board?
I have a president move for approval of minutes.
Trustee Gomez makes a motion for approval. Trustee Rodriguez seconds the motion. Are there any questions? Ms. Bigum, roll call, please.
Just to comment for the record, the minutes are for July twenty-first and also August eighteen.
Thank you. Ms. Bigum, roll call, please.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Item number two, approval of distribution of payroll. What is the pleasure of the board? Trustee Rodriguez makes a motion for approval.
Second.
Trustee Smith seconds the motion. Any questions? Ms. Bigum, roll call, please.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes. Yes.
Trustee Smith? Yes.
Yes. Item number three, approval of claim docket. What is the pleasure of the board? Trustee Smith makes a motion for approval.
A second.
Trustee Rodriguez seconds the motion. Any questions?
President.
Trustee Gomez.
Thank you. I have a couple questions, ones on page ten. Here we have. In the middle, I'm sorry, near the bottom of the page. Check three, one, five, nine, double D, and three, one, six, five, double D. Those are the exact same. Amounts for claim. Is that correct? Okay, they're not identified by month, so.
The second one is five weekly. And the first one is.
Actually, I think this was the week, that's why the conversation's in.
There are two.
There are two.
That was because of, that was the first one that was.
So that's for a single paper.
Yes.
Also, on page eighteen. This one is check number one, zero, nine, zero, five, four. What is that service for?
That is for bus transportation.
Page nineteen, one, zero, nine, zero, four, one. Here again, we have two different amounts. And that's actually in some other documents as well. Well, right below that is another amount. It says total for fund.
That's from adding the Hobart and Sedexo.
And the same with Piper's, page twenty. One, zero, nine, zero, one, five. You did say page twenty, right? I did say page twenty, yes, thank you. Yeah, there it is. One, zero, page twenty-one, one, zero, nine, zero, one, five. Reason I'm asking is that this is identifying support from July through December of this year.
Yes, it is.
I, I thought you said this was for past.
Since the next district or since last year. This is under the same.
Any other questions?
Madam President.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Just to get clearly, with regards to the last, the last one that just Trustee Gomez mentioned. 1095. This individual or this, this company started last year but are getting paid between July and December.
So. It's not from last year, it's this year.
This year, you were.
I guess my question is, why are we paying out in advance of the services being performed? I think we should review that contract instead of training errors. Thank you.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Bigum, roll call please.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Gomez?
No.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez on.
Yes. Item number four, approval of personnel report. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President, make a motion for approval.
A second.
Trustee Smith makes a motion for approval and Trustee Williams seconds the motion. Any questions?
Madam President.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Just have one question with regards to the personnel report. We, I understand that most, most of the acceptance, like the background check, the screening and so forth, has to get through. So the question that I have is, is when these individuals are being placed on the personnel report, have they received confirmation? And has they responded back that they would be interested in taking that position? And the one reason why I'm saying this is because there's an individual that's on here that is unsure as to whether that person is going to take that job or not. But then I'm seeing it here as us approving it as if she's taking the job. He or she is taking the job. So can you clarify a minute? Mr. Gomez?
At time to time, we, we experience that and those, we have people that are on the personal report and then they decide, well, I don't really want them. Even if they sort of verbally accept. As far as the background checks, as long as they start the background check, okay, that's why we put.
So there's a possibility we'll be back here. Again, with that item is what you're saying? Trustee Rodriguez?
Is what I'm, is what it sounds like, yes. So I, I, I'm going to prove something. I'm going to make sure that this individual is 100% wanting to work with our producer rather than putting it on the, for us to approve and this individual may not want, may not be wanting to, 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 I can see as approving the, the job title itself, but to prove the individual to coincide with that job title. And then she may not want it or he may not want it. That's the confusion part that I get.
Yeah.
So we see it again coming back in a couple, a couple of weeks and we're like, didn't this person just get, didn't this job get filled?
Unfortunately, that, that does happen from time to time.
Um, any other questions? Ms. Bigum, roll call please.
Trustee Rodriguez?
No.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez on.
No. Item number five, approval of donation, I'm sorry, of donation report. This is just Dr. Disney letting us know, correct? But there's nothing on the agenda?
Yeah, there were no donations to accept at this time and we leave this on. So it's a routine thing every board meeting, a donation report, but there's no items to be approved. So we would move on to item six.
Item number six, approval of fundraiser report. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President, make a motion to approve.
Trustee Rodriguez makes a motion for approval.
Second.
Trustee Gomez seconds the motion. Any questions? Ms. Bigum, roll call please.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez on.
Yes. Item number seven, approval of human resource contract. Dr. Disney.
Yes, so we've been preparing for the transition of the HR department. Mrs. Martinez has retired, but we're asking to contract services with her so that she can help train the new personnel within the HR office. As we transition for, so we would ask the board to approve consultant support from Mrs. Martinez to continue the work that needs to be done in the HR department.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President, make a motion to approve.
Trustee Rodriguez makes a motion for approval.
Secondly, a motion.
Trustee Williams seconds the motion. Any questions? Ms. Bigum, roll call please.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez on.
Yes. Item number eight, approval of deck, of director of secondary education position. Dr. Disney.
The Dr. Finley?
This position is, well, this afternoon, you had an opportunity to see our director of elementary ed and that's Christina Gutierrez. Her role is in the realms of K through six. That's the population she collaborates and coordinates with. We would like to, we're seeking more approval rather, for someone to complement the, um, her role in coordinating and collaborating with the seventh through 12th so that there is a seamless transition from middle school to high school about curriculum, about staff needs, just the whole gamut of things that go into secondary education. So we're seeking approval for this position right now.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President, make a motion for approval.
Trustee Gomez makes a motion for approval.
Second.
Trustee Smith seconds the motion. Any questions? Ms. Bigum, roll call please.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez on.
Yes. Item number nine, approval of CTC position.
As we came to you at the beginning of the summer or really towards the end of the summer, we did express the need that the school district needed a corporation test coordinator. There are a number of assessments and tests that our students and staff are required to administer. As a requirement for the Department of Education, graduation requirements, just all sorts of requirements, sometimes even the federal government as we've been asked this year. So we are asking for the approval of a corporation test coordinator to coordinate all testing from K to 12 in the district.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President, make a motion for approval.
Trustee Gomez makes the motion for approval.
Second.
Trustee Smith seconds the motion. Are there any questions?
Madam President.
Trustee Gomez.
I noticed on here the vacancy is 2022, 2023, is that correct?
That is correct. We're going, we have a stock gap that you approved earlier at a previous board meeting. So we do have a stock gap of two individuals who are going to work in that capacity for this school year. This helps us to get ready for next school year. So we don't have to worry about coming back in March. We would like to post this position probably in the early spring so that we can have a, we can vet and have a viable candidate in the position before the summer begins.
Thank you. Will this person then onboard with the, with the people that are there now and interact with the directors?
Absolutely. The two individuals right now that are providing the stock gap are Mr. Sharon Arro and Christina Gutierrez. So they are two employees that we currently have in the district. So yes.
And if I could ask one final question, what's the salary for this position?
We have not allocated a salary to the position yet. Once we get this approved, then we'll go back and we'll have a salary. Thank you.
Madam President.
Trustee Williams.
Dr. Finley, I know at one point you just said that we did meet in regards to these, these testings, these deadlines that we had to meet. Are we up to date with this year deadlines with these testings?
We are up to date and current with all of our testing requirements and we have indicated to the state that the two individuals I just named, they are the individuals who will be organizing testing for the entire district. So we are current. You saw some of the data that was presented to you already from iReady. So, and then we also have our PSAT and some other testing requirements that are going to come along with the path. So, so to answer your question, yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Finley, the only thing I have for you is, uh, we talked about if we could sustain the salary and mind you, I know we don't know the salary, but would we be able, I mean, are we, where would we take this from? What fund? Is it part of the ester? Are we going to have this continuous?
It should not be a part of that. So this should be something that the school district absorbs as a whole and it should be able to go under, um, if I had to get.
I lost you. Hello? 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 Okay, I got you guys again. Hello?
Just a second, Vanessa. There seems to be something wrong in the other's connection. I'm going to go out there.
Okay.
All right, Vanessa, I think we're back.
Okay. Yeah, I can hear you guys now. Dr. Finley, question, um, and I just sent this to our board attorney so I can see what he's, uh, his thoughts are on, in our policies regarding new job descriptions. It does say, hold on, let me go back to it. And Attorney Harris, maybe we could have something on that yet, but it says to specify the number of persons as well as set the initial salary for new positions not currently, currently covered by valid salary schedule. Can you please give me your, your legal thoughts on that? If we approve this and we don't have a salary to it?
So I believe the position wouldn't be able to be filled until you comply with that section C of the policy that says you have to set the initial salary. So I don't think there's anything wrong with the approval of the position now, but I think there would be a problem if you, for attempt to fill that new position without complying with that provision that says you have to set the initial salary.
So even though that the, the actual policy is 3111 creating a position and it says that it has to be on there, it's still fine?
Yeah, I would believe that the creation of a position is going to have any significance at the end until you're able to fill it. So if you've created a position and you're saying, hey, you need to fully comply with the policy before you fill it, yes, it's it's useless until, yeah, the salary gets set.
Okay, so then just it has to come before the board with the salary. I just know that when we were creating these new, um, jobs, we did have discussion on the salary previously. So that's why it, this is just the first time we're discussing this, but there's no salary behind this one or the director of secondary education.
Well, I do think that that subject is worth some additional discussion because sometimes you want to be able to advertise for a position, see what type of responses you get and then have some window to negotiate based upon the talent that we have. So it's a little bit, it's probably a little bit more complicated of an issue than the policy leads it to believe, right?
No, I agree. That's why we, we discussed the salary range for previous positions. Now there's no, nothing, no salary, nothing.
And that probably is what needs to come back before the board's range, you know, bottom end and a top end to go along with the creation of the, of the job description. So I think that's probably the next step.
Yes, because we'll have to add these two positions just to have additional contacts to the salary schedule because they are director level positions. So we're going to have to go back and revisit that as well.
So and then for the budget that was presented today, was this already included in there?
No.
Well, it's for next year. I'm sorry, it's for next year.
We need to move next year. We're just trying to, we're trying not to be reactive. We're trying to be proactive.
100% agree, but then that has to reflect on the budget. That's why, that's the only reason I was asking because if we're approving the budget for next year, these positions are for next year. So they should be in the budget, the salary budget for next year, correct?
Correct.
Was that included in there?
No, I don't think it was. I think we're also counting on some, some attrition and we have to go back and look at some other numbers. Keep in mind, we're getting ready to have teacher negotiations too. So there's a lot of other things that we have to consider before we can even get to that point.
And, um, just, I don't know if our CFO is still there, but, um, are you okay with this position being approved and not knowing if we're going to have the funds to cover these positions? She's not in. What's okay? Oh, you are.
I'm here. So this position will be coming out of the education fund. I have a surplus in education fund and I can cover a salary on this and the benefits.
Okay.
And for just to add additional context and go back to the other position, for the director of secondary, we do have our director of federal projects here right now. And we are planning to have that one come out of the title. So just so you're aware, we are making plans for that too.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Ms. Bigum, roll call please.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez on.
Yes. Item number 10, approval of water filling stations. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to table this item to the next meeting.
Trustee Gomez makes a motion to table the item. And Trustee Rodriguez seconds the motion to table the item. Any questions? Ms. Bigum, roll call please.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes, to table, yes.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez on. I'm sorry, Chairman. I'm sorry, Justice Smith.
Yes.
And Chairman Hernandez.
Yes, item number eleven, approval proposal to increase police officer pay. Dr. Disney.
Simmons, we're at item eleven, uh approval proposal of uh to increase police officer pay.
We're currently in competition with our um counties, our police departments around us. Um, they're offering higher rates to all of the police officers here in our district and the district. So we are increasing the rate of the police officers so we can have our police officers stay in our district to help us out instead of going outside of our district to get more money.
Um, thank you. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President, make a motion for approval.
Trustee Smith makes a motion for approval. There's a second, trustee William seconds the motion. Any questions?
Madam President.
Trustee Gomez.
Um, I'm not sure I'm clear. You said that there's a discussion going on, but there's a hard figure here.
Areas around us are outside police departments are also taking, I'm sorry. Outside school districts are taking our police officers out of our district because they're opening more money up to them. That is the reason why we're looking to raise our hourly rate for our police officers to stay in our district to help out in our schools.
So what is the rate that others are paying?
Currently, the rate that others are paying are is from forty to fifty dollars an hour. Some of them are going up to the point of a hundred dollars an hour.
Are there any questions, the follow up? Trustee Williams.
Uh, Mr. Simmons, uh my question to you will be, would this just be um our local East Chicago policemen? Or is this a part of our security there?
No, this is just police officers.
Okay, on their off days or their their off time, this is when they come to the buildings. Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Simmons, is this, is this for uh for events, I mean, that you're bringing these police officers, are they here, are they here eight hours a day?
These um police officers, I'm I'm in focus right now is the training of police officers in morning day. Uh, we do have on that actually two events also. The main focus of raising this rate is to make sure that we can have police officers in the school during that. This is their regular job, just being an officer.
And work in the event of events uh in certain times we could have more presence. Um, this would also be when we're asking uh East Chicago police officers off duty.
So I have to say just on the other side of uh being a police wife and understanding the East Chicago Police Department, um which I will abstain on this, but uh our neighboring city in Gary is heavily recruiting our police officers to go over there for fifty dollars an hour. Um, you also have other things that are happening within the city that our police officers are getting paid fifty dollars an hour. Um, not only our school district, but every school district are obviously having issues um with, you know, student, students in a building. And I think this is uh and I and I and I think um Ms. Simmons and uh the the school district trying to come up the plan to get security in the buildings because we're starting to see that we need it. And um we have to entice those people also to come in and work because they have their their duty also to do. Um, so I think this is a good step forward. Um, because if not, then you know, what's the next step that we're gonna bring in? While we don't want um police officers to be all over the building, but safety comes first, so.
My line of situation with that is, I understand we do need the security as as we speak. Now, all schools are experiencing some type of uh misbehavior. Not saying that they're coming in to harass, let's get it straight. They're not coming into harass, they're not coming in to make it seem like it's a prison. They're coming for protection in the event if anything was to break out. We have to have a, okay, one second. Uh, the only reason why we're raising this is because I would rather have my own officers in my district to secure my child in these schools as opposed to them going to another district. Or we have to hire from another district that doesn't know our district. Now, truthfully speaking, Gary is soliciting East Chicago's police officers. And not only is Gary soliciting police officers from East Chicago, she's uh soliciting from all over our surrounding neighborhood. So I want our own in our own district. Not because I want them to shoot them down unless it's understood it's for security. It's for security, it's not for them to make it safe for our kids. You have your chance to speak at the uh, just the uh So let's get it straight, not that they're coming to the schools with machine guns or whatever. They're just making sure that we can be able to have some type of security in place. And I would rather for my own community to protect my child as to have and have to go and my police officers are going to Gary and I have to go to a firm or somebody from Hammond. I'm just not with that. So if we can give them forty five dollars an hour.
Uh, can we please make sure we have ordered uh attorney Harris?
Can we move on?
Yeah, if there's any other questions from the board, if not, then we could go to a roll call.
Madam President.
Trustee Gomez.
I, uh, for somebody to ask the audience if they could uh hold comments until later, this is a board of trustees. Uh, you're invited to speak to the board uh later. Uh, at this point in time, let's continue with the business uh that we have in front of us. And that's uh I guess my question would be, uh first of all, this is not just for East Chicago police officers, correct?
If we can get other police officers to come in, it will be, we will have other police officers in our system.
Okay, thank you.
Is also saying that they will fall under our security director's direction.
Um, my second uh question is, if other districts are paying um and I I I don't, I I I don't want to get into any war with other districts. But if they're paying fifty dollars and we're at forty five, what, why would somebody not go somewhere else?
I'm sorry, I can't hear the CFO.
We are trying to, I'm and we are trying to bring in our officers here. I have spoken with the police department on this rate and I did clear it with them. So we're trying just to make sure that we can entice our police officers to stay here. So I did have a conversation with the police staff when I decided on this.
Are there any more questions? Ms. Biggum roll call please.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez.
Abstain. Next item, approval of proposal to increase substitute maintenance pay. Dr. Disney.
Um, yes, it's been some time since uh it's supposed to be the peace paddle has raised the substitute maintenance pay is currently at seven seventy five an hour. Uh, it's a hard time getting subs for that. Um, they're starting salary at McDowens is beyond that. So we refer to Ms. Simmons so that we can attract substitutes. But we're asking board to increase uh for substitute. It's very okay from seven seventy five an hour to fourteen dollars an hour. Anything that you'd like to add?
What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President, make a motion to approve.
Trustee Rodriguez makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Is that Ms. Smith? Trustee Smith seconds the motion. Any questions?
Madam President.
Trustee Rodriguez.
No more comment. It's about time.
Anything else? Um, Ms. Biggum roll call please.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez.
Yes, item number thirteen, approval of Edmonton license virtual learning. Dr. Disney.
Yeah, absolutely. So we um are seeking board's approval to enter into a partnership with Edmonton um learning or licensure for virtual learning specifically. Uh, we've had an opportunity to speak with you guys about this in the past. Um, just essentially, um, there will be a less than a hundred students enrolled in this virtual learning as needed. According to our virtual learning plan, if students have medical issues and um we, this is an option for us to tap into for virtual learning. The teachers will be hired from Edmonton. They will do all of the monitoring for the students. We'll just have to have some staff gaps in place to make sure that we have a referral process, a contract in place for um parents to sign off on an agreement. And we also need to make sure that we have someone monitoring. So those are things that we'll take care of in-house. But right now, we're seeking your approval for this virtual license, virtual learning program.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President, I'll make a motion for approval.
Trustee Williams makes a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Trustee um Rodriguez seconds the motion. Any questions? Ms. Biggum roll call please.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez.
Yes, item number fourteen, approval of contract for professional services interventionist Mary McGee. Dr. Disney.
We will, we're we're speaking um in an interventionist at McKinley and this is the a person that we're wanting to enter to this agreement with.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President, I'll make a motion for approval.
Trustee Williams makes a motion for approval.
Second.
Trustee Smith seconds the motion. Any questions?
Madam President.
Trustee Gomez.
The uh person is gonna be housed at McKinley, that's servicing the district, is that correct?
She will be housed at McKinley, serving McKinley. She will be at McKinley.
Only servicing that school?
That is correct. And that is because the funds that are allocated to that specific school um asks or gives us the a flexibility to be able to pay for her directly. It's a title fund and she has to be assigned to that specific school. It's not a district position.
Any other questions? Ms. Biggum roll call please.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez.
Yes, item number fifteen, approval of MOU with community and schools of Lake County.
This is a an MOU for communities and schools of Lake County. Um, they, as you can, you heard earlier today from the high school specifically, they've been doing great work in partnership with Central High School. I know that they do awesome work with our elementary schools as well. This is a um three-year agreement. Uh, we're going to share the costs, salaries specifically, for half of a social emotional learning interventionist that will work in our elementary schools. Um, that individual will um work for communities and schools, will partner with our schools and will collaborate with our SEL director, who you will have the pleasure of connecting with next month at a presentation for a presentation. She will collaborate with our director of SEL on services and interventions for our students.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President, I'll make a motion for approval.
Trustee Williams makes a motion for approval. Trustee Rodriguez seconds the motion. Any questions? Uh, Ms. Biggum roll call please.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez.
Yes, item number sixteen, approval of use of Kerry Gash Learning Center Parking Lot. Dr. Disney.
Um, yes, so there's been a continued partnership with the um city of East Chicago. And we're just asking, uh, this has been a uh an event that has happened in the past. And we're asking for approval Friday, October twenty ninth, for the uh the city to utilize the Kerry Gash uh parking lot set up beginning at four P M. Um, the program would be from four P M until nine.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve.
Trustee Rodriguez makes a motion for approval.
I'll second that motion.
Trustee Williams seconds the motion. Any questions? I just wanna say, all of you guys will be getting an email to participate in the event. And all the schools will also, and that's all. Um, Ms. Biggum roll call please.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez.
Abstain. Item number seventeen, approval of agreement between the city of East Chicago and the school city for the truancy program. Dr. Disney.
So, um, for the last uh two years, our truancy program was in partnership with the foundations in the city of East Chicago and the school city. As of this year, going into November the first, school city will be taking over. The truancy officers will be in partnership also with the city. The truancy officers will be an employee of school state.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President, I'll make a motion for approval.
Trustee, trustee Smith makes a motion for approval and trustee Gomez seconds the motion. Any questions?
Madam President, I have one question. Can you hear me?
Yes, I do.
Okay, um, is there any way we could possibly come, not combine, but at least court have a collaboration between the truancy program and the social emotional learning of the students?
So that's that's actually part of it. So what it happens with the um, if you, uh, only because I've been in the meetings. If the child, the child reaches so many, um, I guess absences, um, because this is a prevention system, so they want to help the the parent as well as the child. So if they know that they're, they can't get to school because, you know, they are being bullied or they'll give them preventative measures to help them. So the first stop is giving SEL um and any other, um, I guess background to help them get to the school. And if that, if that doesn't work, all the help that's given to them, then it it progresses to get to the court level. Um, and I think maybe we, you know, I know there's, they've done a couple presentations, maybe they could come back and kind of let us know again of how us know again of how it's supposed to go.
Yes, because I like to see the data on that. I'm pretty sure most, all board members here would like to see that as well.
Any other questions?
Madam President.
Trustee Williams.
Who is the point person for this uh, for this truancy program? I know at one point in time that wasn't, that wasn't directed for, but who, who's the assistant? The point person for this program?
Is there a reason why it's not under the social emotional learner? I mean, I guess that's a superintendent, that's you guys, but no, that was just a thought.
But, the, the truancy program at one point in time was his own department. So, uh, is it possible, is it possible, uh, either Dr. Disney and Dr. Simmons, is it possible that we could have a exec session or a meeting where the truancy program uh, reports to us? How is it taking place now within the school district that we're back in school? What is, what is, what is functioning with this program at this point?
The current function of this program is actually they're going to fund the city. So I do not get involved until November first, hopefully. Only part that I've been involved in was actually preparing the documents for um, the foundation and for the city. So they are reporting to the city and do you believe they might report to Mr. Brown? Am I correct? Yes, and Mr. Brown is the president personally. Report to me.
Thank you.
So if I could just keep a comment to just to address, um, Trustee Williams' some of this concern right now. Because I understand the question, CFO was running the truancy program and it seems somewhat strange right now. So the, the, I helped the city in drafting the ordinance and also the agreement that you see in front of you now. Um, and it was determined that the city wasn't in the best position to manage a truancy program for children. It really is something that should be under the umbrella of education, should be schools that's doing it. So right now, there are issues involving funding that needed to be addressed. And because it was primarily a funding issue, obviously it was directed to the CFO. Now, if under the direction of superintendent, you want to restructure that program in any way you see fit, you can. But for right now, in order to make sure those truancy officers are paid, even timely paid, it was a, a matter to be brought for the CFO. And that's kind of how we got to where we are right now.
And so actually this, it's a delivery of a program that truancy officers are working individually with building principals, counselors through the SEL.
Yeah.
And it, it's a preventative program to try to identify kids that are out for extended, what are the times, where the resources and make sure it gets around school. And it's an excellent program, but of course, the data, um, last year, there's really no data to provide because of the amount of time that they're out in school under the COVID pandemic. And so, um, but it's an excellent program, um, Tim.
Um, they, what they did was they did provide um, the MTSS and Lilly Grant um, report. They provided all the letters they sent out, all the home visits they made, they provided all of the interventions. Um, and they can have that data, I, I might have it on the slides, but um, they have that already, they have it each year. So we could um, forward to the board, but I think it'd be interesting for you to hear from them all that they have provided as the intervention. And they do work hand in hand. They attend all of the MTSSD and ESSD in the district. So they are a very integral part of all of our program, our SEL program. And they.
I am, uh, we are aware that, uh, Mrs. Poe, I know we did, um, we did receive a lot of data and a lot of information within the first year of the program. I know last year was kind of lack of due to the fact of COVID. But now that we're back here, um, I think, I tell me Harris kind of clarified what it was that I was asking of. Um, at one point in time, this wasn't, there, it wasn't directed for this position. And that position is no longer being filled. So I understand that now will be under the supervision of our superintendent of where we want to go with this program. So that was my concern. So not necessarily that they weren't doing their job, but it's just the fact that we're moving to, so thank you.
And I just have one more comment, um, especially for the principals of the schools. If we have, if we have, we have this great uh, 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 social emotional learning partnerships with, with a lot, with a lot of these organizations as well as in our schools. Let's see how we can work that out with, with the truancy, because obviously I, I understand that the program is working great, but I want to know how the kids are doing in these programs or whether the kids are even in these programs that are being truancy. And those are the things that, that's going to make us move quicker in terms of what, what solutions that we can find to solve this, this issue that we're having. So it's the kids that I'm more focused about. If you have that data, please share it with us.
Any other questions? Ms. Uh, Biggum roll call please.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez.
Yes, approve, um, item number eighteen, approval of library board appointment. Uh, Trustee Gomez, since you at, wanted to add it on.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, uh, for the library board appointment which expires this Saturday. I'd like to nominate uh, Stephanie Ramos to uh, retain that position. She's represented the board well on the library board and I think she'll continue to do a fine job there.
What is the pleasure of the board? Oh. I'm assuming that's your motion. Trustee Gomez and Trustee Rodriguez are seconding the motion.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Um, are there any questions?
I just have one question. I, I want to commend all the applicants, by the way. I think we had some great applicants, but um, in this, this type of situation, we're bad. I feel that, I feel that for persons doing their job in the library, let's, let's retain that individual. Let's make sure that, that uh, we keep, we keep the fire running, we keep the fire flowing. I think this person did a great job, so.
Uh, any other questions? Um, Ms. Biggum roll call please.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez.
Yes, um, next we'll move to item F, old business, and we have the approval of contracted services agreement. Dr. Disney?
This was presented as an item uh, for an organizational study. Um, it was tabled last meeting, um, so I want to know what the pleasure of the board, would they like to table this or take action on it?
Uh, and I know that the board stated that, I think we take action on this. Um, can I please receive a motion from the board to take action on this item? And we could discuss.
Madam President, would you approve of the contracted services agreement?
Trustee Gomez makes a motion for approval.
I'll second that motion.
Trustee seconds the motion. And I just wanted to just, um, from our conversations as the board, I know uh, it's been a concern for the board to go with the superintendent um, search team as well as the uh, to have the same organizational study done by that superintendent search team. So this is the reason why we wanted to bring it to, um, I guess an action rather than continue to table this item. And then there's no action taken. So if there's any questions or any other discussion that we would like to do prior to taking a vote. Ms. Biggum roll call please.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
No.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez.
No. Um, next we'll move to superintendent remarks.
Um, I'd like to uh, start off by saying that we appreciate President Biden. His proclamation of September is uh, Hispanic Heritage Month. Um, would like to say that we posted, began some events and we want to recognize our very own Sylvia Alvarez was nominated for excellence in the Hispanic Latin community. Um, with, tell the board that Lincoln's fourth grade teacher, Arlene Rodich, has been accepted, Rodich has been accepted into the IDOE Teacher Leaders Boot Camp. Only fifty teachers throughout the state have been selected participate, uh, participate in this program. So I want to congratulate, uh, Arlene. I'd like to personally thank uh, the high school in East Chicago as well as Congressman Murvan. Congressman Murvan uh, was back in town and he came to East Chicago uh, Central High School last week uh, in the afternoon and had a um, question and answer a program with about fifty of our students would ask, uh, Mr. Brown or Ms. Would you like comment was there? The interaction was great. It's wonderful to see Congressman Murvan, all the work that he has done as uh, North Township, but now as he's moved on to Congress, still coming back and still being engaged with our St. C Chicago. But, Madam President, anything?
No, I just think, just yeah, thinking back off what you said, we had a great conversation with students um, in our mini theater last week with them, so it was nice, nice.
And then would uh, close by saying Friday night, the home football game, we are honoring first responders. All first responders will be free and uh, and free and they will be recognized at halftime. And so uh, we just want to shout out to all of our fire, police department, EMT, first responders and what they do to help protect the city and respond uh, on behalf of the students, the resident community.
Is that all, Dr. Disney?
Yes.
Awesome. Um, any trustee remarks?
Madam President.
Trustee Gomez.
Thank you. Um, I know for that, no, we had a discussion about the superintendent's search um, of group. If I can ask, turn to Harris. Uh, shares thoughts on the uh, where we move from here?
Yes, um, I'd like to provide you with an update regarding that. So as you all know, we've been discussing selecting a, a provider to assist in the search for a permitted superintendent. We have a interim superintendent right now. Um, as you all know, we received proposals from several groups and um, the board reached a consensus that the uh, the proposals submitted by the university search team uh, was best for the district. As you all know, the university search team is comprised of several universities throughout the state of Indiana, Purdue, Indiana State, uh, U of L, ten, uh, all state. They're all part of that team. Uh, they provide this service. Uh, they've been doing it for, for decades and it's at no cost. I'm going to take that way heavily in your decision of uh, choosing them. But because it's free, it's a free service, they don't provide a standard form of grievance so that we can engage them. But um, in order to make sure we at least memorialize um, the representations that were made during their presentation regarding when they could start the process, when they anticipate ending the process and what services it would include, I think it's important to do um, do document it and enter into an agreement, even though there's no fee associated with it. So what I would ask is that the board um, authorize me um, to move forward with drafting an agreement, sending it to them. That would consist of all the items included in their presentation to the board. Um, and it'll be subject to approval at the board meeting October fourth. I don't think you need a formal vote for that. I'm just going to give you an update, uh, but I want to make clear in the public meeting that that's the first thing I'm taking.
Any other trustee remarks? I do have, um, a trustee remark, uh, trying to get to it, sorry. Um, I just wanted to say, um, that today's incidents that occurred at Central High School does hit home. I understand because I'm a parent of Central High School student. I'm also a board member that has been sending emails and texts about being concerned with the safety of the students at the schools. Our job as board members are to make sure that the child is receiving education. At every conference that we attend, the child learns if they are feeling safe and if their bellies are full. We unfortunately are failing them. Principal and security and staff, they try to do a good job and I thank you guys for that. Um, but we as board members and administrators and parents all need to come together and help. I have asked for the board to be updated on a plan to keep children safe. I want us to take it one step further and relay the plan to parents so that they can know what is going on and rumors cannot scare them or students. If we are in this together, then we have to communicate because we should all have student safety as a priority. It's my first item. The next item I did want to discuss was, um, that the school district and its staff is celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. And I heard on the TV that flowers have roots. And I love the fact that our student, that our staff end up giving the water to the students so they could know their roots also, so they could grow. And I'm just proud that the school city of East Chicago acknowledges everyone and every individual and their roots. And finally, um, we did, uh, there was an approval of the personnel report and on there, we had an individual who has worked for the school district. And um, Ms. Biggum, maybe you could help me, um, Ms. Martinez for, I don't know how many years you might know.
Thirty years in the district.
And that commitment to our district, her help for keeping our HR department going um, is tremendous. And I just wanted to commend her for all that she's done uh, for the school city of East Chicago. There have been many a times where that department did not have a director, but she kept it afloat. So thank you, uh, Ms. Martinez, for um, all that you've done for the school city of East Chicago. Any other comments? Next we'll move to the public forum.
Madam President, I do have a point, just one comment.
Oh, Trustee Rodriguez.
I just want to say one thing. I mean, we've, we've talked about, you know, all these great programs, we talk about what we can do for our kids. Um, but I also have to look at one item. And that's nourishment. When these kids are not eating the food that are in these cafeterias because, because of the, because of the mold, because of just, just so much different things that I'm seeing, I'm hearing about it. I see the pictures and we got to do something about it. We, we are, we are the authority through policy. And I, and I can tell you this much, I received the contract, I've seen the contract. And we're going to have to hold somebody accountable. This company is, has to realize, I'm not going to say no names, but we have to really focus on either they straighten up, they feed these kids what they want to feed, what they want to know, what they want to eat. Or we're going to have, we're going to have to fire them. And I like using that word, fire them. So that, I mean, that's, that's my first, this is probably going to be my first talk about this and hopefully, you know, I'm a type of person that not only do I talk about it, but I like to get it done. I like to show action behind what I say. So this is the first step. Thank you.
Any other, oh, any other trustee remarks? Now we'll move to public forum. Attorney Harris.
Yes, uh, public forum is an opportunity for the public to participate uh, in the board meeting. We would ask that you please state your name when you step to the podium. Please be respectful of the other attendees of the meeting, the board members and also the staff. Please refrain from discussing any individual grievances involving your. involving your child or your employment with the district. Your comments will be limited to three minutes.
Well, first would be Krista Hughes.
Hi, my name is Krista Hughes. Good evening, City of East Chicago Board members. Many parents, I included, are very concerned as to how we are working to keep our children safe at all levels. I am a parent of a child at Harrison who has already witnessed and been a victim of assault at your schools. We never received a call from your administrative staff that day. We as parents also received a call today that our high school students were subjected to an even more violent situation. And again, we ask you how this will be resolved. This is an ongoing and constant issue within your school district, and we feel no resolutions have been made in recent years. We elect the school board to make the necessary changes to keep our children safe from violence, and we must see this from the school board. We are a month and a half into the, into the school year, and our children have not been kept safe. We as the parents are seeking resolution on this matter swiftly. We can no longer sit around and allow our children to be subjected to violence and emotional damage. We are asking for stricter protocols, more in-school security, not officers, revised consequences. Parents getting informed in a timely manner, a safety plan that is clear and concise, and for us parents to be a part of making the school safe. We also feel that parents play a big part in their children's education, education and lives. And to keep our school safe, we must include them in all aspects of their children's education, including consequences. We need PTOs, regular parent meetings, and more involvement from the schools to engage parents. Children cannot keep making other children feel unsafe and get to come back to school. As we have seen in the past, the parents also must be held responsible at some point.
That was it?
Yes.
Okay, um, the next date and time for the meeting will be October fourth. And that will be at six P M. at the AB building. Can I have a motion for adjournment? I'm sorry, I can't.
Madam President, Madam President, I make the motion for adjournment.
Trustee Williams makes the motion for adjournment. I cannot hear, do I have a second?
You do. Second.
Trustee Gomez seconds the motion. Uh, roll call is Bigum.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez.